With food, but they're running out of meat. And so they're making adjustments. Bird Springs says they're okay with food. Another week or so, and then I think it's Tlalnay Lake that they're probably using some of their own funds for food. And then that's, and that's sort of the report that I got yesterday from Western Agency. So Ojito is probably the only center that's dealing with no food right now. As part of my verbal update as well, so terrorists, so hopefully when those PRs are put in place, they should have access to food from BASHAS. In regards to resolving the food. And I think if this is brought up at the summer session or any session, I think one thing that we're always gonna, what we're always gonna run into is not enough funding, not enough staff. And also that the contracts, when the process for the contracts are just very cumbersome. To get those, sometimes yes, it's on our end, but it really goes back to staffing issues. So if you really look at the DOLTEX, I think TIBISID finally got a new accountant recently. So each agency is supposed to have an accountant, but we only have one in Crown Point and the other areas don't have an accountant. I mean, even with that, if you're managing over two hundred staff and at these centers, you have two to three individuals and supervisors overseeing multiple centers. We already know it's inadequate. So at some point, we're all gonna have to realize that we, we have to get more staffing and resources, period. The external funding isn't sufficient enough in the way that, and so we're trying to work with the states, and I think I have another meeting coming up soon with them, that I need to discuss with the state of Arizona that we can't continue to have multiple amendments that inhibit us from making sure we're focusing on operating the program rather than doing tons of paperwork. So there's a lot of issues, yes, I understand that. And I think through the current XSA who's still employed, her effort, I think mainly was to try to understand, to get the programs or the agencies to kind of follow the contractual requirements, like the DARs, they have to report. And we're still working with them on their invoices, we have vendor issues. I think the thing is that we don't have a vendor to also address the need of the DOLTEX program, even though we say by local, by Navajo, we don't have a local company we need that can be adequately, have that adequately, I guess, operable to provide the amount of food we need every day. And so I think Blue Mountain Meats has been sort of the go-to, but even that, we're dealing with issues with bad food and that are given to us or expired food and things like that, so we have vendor issues too. So I mean, other than that, we do have a planner position that we needed to fill, and I think I need to advertise that as well to kind of help Mr. and Mr. Lewis and the other staff too, but even at Central. Because of, we don't have staffing at the agencies, enough staff, and enough staff at the senior centers, it just makes everything more complicated. And I guess I'm trying to restart and think and figure out how to advocate for additional funding and resources. Because what we get is still not, is still not enough. And so I hope that we can find some solutions through, what I haven't put together is the unmet needs for the DOLTEX program, and that's just to get the facilities repaired and maintained. So they're up to code. So that's the other issue is that risk, the other part that we're talking about. So there's a number of issues, I think we can continue to report back to the committee on what we're doing. Thank you for your, the concerns, and I am aware of TIBIS, Western Agency's updates, because I had a meeting with them yesterday with Mr. Lewis. And I'll continue to have meetings with the other agencies, and certainly I can provide a written report, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Honorable Paul Begay, do you have follow-up?
Yes, Chair. Thank you again for allowing me for follow-up. I do appreciate, uh, for my years, Dr. Jill, too. Letting, letting me know that you had a meeting with Western Agency. But, uh, actually, I, I, I'm sitting here thinking, there's two different versions. So my understanding is, they need help with food. Kybeto, where I'm getting all these complaints, they, they're okay. Uh, that's very puzzling. You know, I come here and I express my issues before the committee here. But it's almost like, uh, the issues that I express, they seem to be okay. So, so I don't know, uh, who you met with as far as meeting with the people in Western Navajo. These issues that had arisen had, uh, really, it was specifically pertained to Kybeto senior citizens. Uh, I appreciate if the report is correct, indicating that Kybeto is in good shape as far as food. I appreciate that report. Somewhere along the way, the communication, communication, uh, I, 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 it makes me feel very uncomfortable, getting information from two different areas and they don't, uh, they're not the same information. Hopefully I'll find some type of persuasion that is, uh, that's, that's more understandable. Okay, thank you.
Um, Chair, this is Dr. Jim.
Oh, Dr. Jim.
I said Kybeto didn't report, so she didn't, wasn't, she wasn't on the call, so there possibly is no food, and my report is that she wasn't on the call to report. So for all I know, I'll get back with you guys in an email to let you know if Kybeto is one of the other facilities. But during our meeting, I met with all the senior center supervisors, but, so, so if there is no food, um, yes, I will report that in our written document. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, we do have Dr. Fowler and Ms. Resita Tadi on the call. Most relevant to what Dr. Jim expresses, the need for, um, help in getting staffed. And whether it will take reclassification or just advertising current vacancies. Um, Dr. Fowler, Ms. Resita Tadi, can you provide the committee with, how you would assist the DOLTEX program to get these very necessary positions fulfilled? And the, right now, we, we basically need to get services out to the senior centers.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is Dr. Fowler. I am here and I can provide a response. Where it's not just with DOLTEX, a lot of programs, and we have a whole amount of vacancies within our Navajo Nation. And we are doing the best that we can to fill a lot of these positions. The positions on lay program, door managers, these are some of the requirements, as far as education and experience. And so that kind of hinders a lot of the people to apply, I don't have this, I don't have that experience. However, what we're doing right now is there's a thought, there's a policy called underfield policy. There was, at one point, there was a underfield policy that was created. We're relooking at that, and then I had Department of Personnel Management, the team there, Ms. Woody, Ms. Tadi, and even the recruitment supervisor there. We're looking at the underfield policy to how we can better serve each of the division and programs in using this policy, rather than saying that they need this many experience, they need to have this type of credential. What more is it and what better it can be to work with these individuals that apply? It's pretty much similar with internship, let them gain the experience. And, but of course, the policy has to go through our oversight as HES. We're doing our best to expedite this policy that will really benefit not only the programs, but our overall Navajo Nation. So that policy, the first draft policy is due to my office this Friday. So it looks really good, I'm really happy for the team to put that together. But there are certain procedures that we like to include in there. I think that's gonna really benefit. And on top of that, it's gotta go through my army media supervisor, the chief of staff, the underfield policy is going through its first draft. Once we get the first draft out by the, um, the overall deadline, the twenty-second, and then we want to make sure we can present it to our oversight, which I believe your next meeting is on the twenty-seventh. Auto is gonna take a team, and then we have what we can do overall, once that's approved. We have a plan in place to orientate all the division and programs. Here's what we're gonna use, and this is what the underfield policy does mean. But then again, we refer back to each of the division and program. Auto, are there some that you can reclassify to moving some of those money around within your program? So those are the steps that we're taking. I hope that provides some good response in talking about the DOLTEX and auto such a community development, Department of Public Safety, so it's in all areas. So, but that's what we're doing on our end. Just to let you all know, on top of this, related to this report.
Thank you, Dr. Fowler. Committee members, anybody else want to speak up on this particular topic and report? Okay. Specific to this report, committee members, we have a motion to accept the report. Motion by Honorable Edison Winika. Again, by Honorable Paul Begay. A discussion. Okay. There being none, so with the assurance that there's continuing work to, find the funds to get food supplies to senior centers and, there's work to amend policies to expedite the filling of vacancies. That, committee members, there's no, any additions? Uh, so let's take it to a vote.
Yes, sir. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Honorable Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Fernal Valona. Honorable Fernal Valona.
Green.
Honorable Fernal Valona votes green. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Honorable Edison Winika, green. Honorable Edison Winika votes green. Chair, both of the four favors are opposed.
Okay, thank you, committee member. That now takes us to item five B, Ms. Andeli for the knowledge.
Yes, I'm the chair. And you have your five B as a report from the Division of Human Resources regarding the COVID variant strain surges impact on Navajo Nation employee attendance and office operations. Also, the Navajo Nation COVID leave update and usage. Presenters are Dr. Fabilia Fowler, Division Director, Division of Human Resources, and also Resita Tadi, who is added to the agenda as a presenter. She is the Human Resources Director, Department of Personnel Management. Also available for this presentation is Dr. Jill Jim, Executive Director for the Navajo Department of Health. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Fowler, you have the floor.
Yeah.
Really highly encourage our employees to get their vaccination and their boosters. And however, the mask is still a requirement within the workplace. We do our best at informing our employees not to eat in the office areas and to continue to take all the preventative measures. So we do continue to do our town halls every Tuesday on the COVID nineteen and the variant update, the vaccines and the boosters. So all that we do every Tuesday. All, and our employees, we continue to provide and make sure that they refer to our website. One of the things that our hospital is not doing right now is they no longer provide medical statements or notices to employers indicating that so-and-so has COVID and they're just out for the slum. Then, so they're refraining from that. However, we still have our isolation guidelines and our quarantine guidelines that are in place and that are on the website. And during the agency council this past Saturday with forty-five's agency and with Chilimy Agency, I also did report that we do have forty-two of our employees that are teleworking. Of course, that is probably going up, and the number of our employees that catch the COVID. I'm not saying that they're not careful, but I think a lot of times we don't know who's asymptomatic at home. So we really have to go back and reset ourselves. And if you're an employee, if you're sick, we tell them, please stay home. We don't require them to come into work if they're ill, they're sick. And if they have somebody that had tested positive, we tell them to please follow the isolation and quarantine guidelines that is in place on the website. And Dr. Jim and I, we've been doing our best to, to continue to announce these, these information. However, Department of Personnel Management, a COVID leave. And with those COVID leave, we do have a policy that you've all approved as well that is in place. We did discuss of extending those hours, but we didn't want to at this time because there were some abuse that were happening around this time, like payday week. We can't really control where they go on weekends. So at this time, I'd like to hand off to Shama Ms. Tadi, who is covering for Ms. Woody. Ms. Woody, our Human Resource Director, is attending to the budget hearing to our office of the President. So she's reviewing that on that end. That's why Ms. Tadi will be presenting the COVID numbers that DPM has received. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hand it on to Ms. Tadi. And then for any additional information regarding the status we're in, Dr. Jim, Division of Health. I believe we're still in the yellow status right now. I believe with the most recent numbers, we may have, we may be experiencing uptake, but I'll let Dr. Jim elaborate on that. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to give the floor over to Ms. Tadi to explain the numbers of the COVID leave requests that we have, if she has an updated number of the teleworking personnel. The last one I reported was forty-two. So Ms. Tadi, if you can assist in reporting the numbers of the COVID leave, thank you.
Good morning, honorable members of the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee. This is Resita Tadi, I'm the Classification and Pay Manager with the Department of Personnel Management. And I'm currently representing Ms. Woody, who is our Human Resources Director. Today, I'll be providing the numbers as far as the number of COVID requests, leave requests that we've received within the past two quarters. During the second quarter of FY twenty-two, we received a total of four hundred and sixty-two requests during the month of January, and four hundred and forty-three requests during the month of February, and ninety-two during the month of March. From the beginning of the year, we did have an influx of COVID requests that were coming in. And with the continuous rise in the numbers during that quarter, we were really busy trying to get all of those leave requests updated and processed so that the employees can continue to receive a paycheck. So for the total, for the second quarter, the total was nine hundred and ninety-seven leave requests that we received. And we tried to break it down by category, but it became really overwhelming because of the timelines that we had to make updates. So we are continuing to work on the categories, and we can provide you with a, an updated report. But for the month of January, we were able to break that down, and we had eighty-two employees who were on, uh, who were exposed, or I'm sorry, who contracted the virus and tested positive. So that was eighty-two. The other was for family members, there were nineteen family members that contracted COVID, and the employee was required or was, yes, requested to tend to the family member. And then we had seventy-one who were exposed. So there's still a large number that have not been accounted for during that period. In the third quarter, for the month of April, we had ninety-two COVID requests. And in May, we had seventeen, and in June, we have ninety-four. So for this current quarter, the one that ended on June thirtieth, we had two hundred and three COVID leave requests. So for that six-month period, we had about one thousand two hundred leave requests that were processed. And one of the things I'd like to point out is that I'm sure that you have been receiving concerns from your constituents regarding employees not getting paid. One of the issues is that we get untimely requests, they're submitted after the fact, or we're lacking documents to validate whether or not they would be eligible for the COVID leave requests. Sometimes they submit their request and they don't follow up with a copy of their, their test results to show that they either had a positive test result if they were claiming COVID leave. So during this period, it really impacted a lot of the employees, and we did get a lot of requests to say, you know, what's going on, why isn't it that they're not getting paid? But I think the coordination with the employee, between the employee and the supervisor submitting the documents to our office was really overlooked by a lot of programs. And the expectation was that if they report and they don't provide the, even if they don't provide the required documentation, that DPM would process it. However, you know, we did have, we do have criteria spelled out in our procedures on what is required in order for us to process their documents. So during the, the month, the second quarter was when we had a lot of issues with processing of COVID leave requests. And we are currently, during this quarter, the numbers kind of went down, as you can tell. In the month of May, I indicated that there were seventeen requests that were submitted, and then in June, it went back up to ninety-four. So it's, uh, it's continuously, it's a fluctuating thing. You know, we can never tell when individuals will become exposed or if they will test positive. So we continue to urge and encourage the employees to really continue to wear their mask. um continue to wear their mask and to be mindful of um areas that are um hotspots. And I know that um a lot of individuals who do go down south, like into the valley, they um, a lot of them have been coming back with the um COVID um symptoms, and then they end up testing positive. So again, we all need to um remind our employees that they need to continue to practice the social distancing, wearing their mask, and also taking extra precautions on their travel outside of the um Navajo Nation. Uh as Dr. Fowler indicated, we do have um employees that are telecommuting. And um we really don't have an accurate number for a while. In the second court, second quarter, we were receiving a large number of telecommuting um agreement requests that were um being submitted. So on um, I don't have a number available in terms of the number of people that are telecommuting. So um we can also get that information and provide you an update. I have staff working on the figures right now or the numbers so that we can give you an accurate reporting of um the uh individuals that are working from home. So um that's the extent of my report, and I don't know if you have any questions. I am available to answer if you have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that will complete uh DPM and DHR administration's report. We will provide written documentation by tomorrow before five on what Ms. Tadi had reported on the numbers. And we'll also include some recommendations from DPM and DHR. And that's all I have. And I'm not sure if you want to have Dr. Jim elaborate on the COVID uh the the COVID portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Jill Jim?
Oh, non, Yad Ashana and um Hess committee members, and also thank you, Ms. Tadi and Dr. Fowler for providing information. In regards to COVID, um we are seeing um and an increase, and we do have, we are in another surge, and we are probably experiencing three different variants at the moment, um based on CDC's sublin- sublinages report. And of course, um the virus is always changing and mutating. So I know we're, what we're probably experiencing is the BA dot two dot one, two dot two, or BA dot four and BA dot five are also um likely. Um and they were already detected on the Navajo Nation through our surveillance program um that we have with Tijin as well under the epicenter. So those um uh sublinages are here on the Navajo Nation are, and also are probably a ca- uh cause uh to some of these transmittable, highly transmittable um virus that we're seeing right now. And so right now, we are not experiencing any um healthcare um impact right now. Our um capacity for hospital beds and ICU are still below um eighty percent and and at most times less than seventy percent. And the admissions that were seen to the hospital are really related to um non-COVID um uh non-COVID admissions. And so we don't have any new um public health emergency orders. We are focusing on getting individuals up to date with their vaccine. Um what we're aware of, there are, of course, reinfections and also um we also are aware that um the back individuals that are up to date with their booster shots can also still get sick and can still get very sick, but uh may not be hospitalized. So vaccines are effective in sort of the hospital, severe hospitalization and death. So we're continuing to encourage um individuals um to still get vaccinated and to practice the precautions. And although we have a um, we do, we although we have a mask in indoor and outdoor mandate, I think what we can't control are um when people go off the Navajo Nation or what they do at home. And most of the transmissions that we're seeing right now, uh the Health Command Operations Center still receives information from the programs about their exposures, those that we catch. Um we still don't have the decontamination services, and we're still doing hard wipe downs. But um we are um working, we did work on the COVID leave policy with um DPM, and we are encouraging individuals to follow the isolation and quarantine guideline as well. And so what we can do is what um we can continue to make sure there's no office transmissions um that, but most of these cases are um at-home transmissions. Uh one that um they're getting infected at home. And so what we want to prevent is office spread and making sure that people take time. The guidelines are a little bit different for if you have a vaccine or if you don't have a vac- seen, but most employees are probably more than ninety-five percent vaccinated and up to date. Um with the up to date, I'm not sure because we don't have an executive order for vaccine requirements for the, for the new up to date, for those that are eligible that are age fifty and older. But we know that group um are up to date um through the data that we have, even though there's no mandate. So our um older um the workforce or individuals out in the community are 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 up to date on their vaccine, either that be their fourth vaccine um booster dose. Um so we're encouraging everyone contin- to continue to do that. In regards to the ongoing pandemic, um I don't think that we're um at a point where we're seeing we're at the tail end. Uh we are, we're still experiencing different variants and different surges and likely um we can't predict the future, but we know when the weather gets colder, uh we do see more um cases um at times. And last year, we did start seeing cases around September and uh and into October and ending in July. So these um new variants are, uh they are a pattern. I don't think we're at our peak yet. I know with the July Fourth holiday, I think we're at the tail end of that for maybe um individuals that were um exposed and positive, um likely already got sick from the Fourth of July holiday. And now we're probably seeing individuals that are getting sick for for them, for a person being in contact with someone that was exposed during Fourth of July. So hopefully, we will see sort of a downward trajectory on this. But in regards to COVID, I I believe this is going to be ongoing. And when we adopted the new COVID leave policy, it was core sort of adopting how we're transitioning back to um the new normal or the next normal of the pandemic. And that's just kind of normalizing what we don't know what new the new normal is, but we have to normalize how we um address um the pandemic as COVID being a regular, um sort of a regular flu. And and we don't, at this point, have any information from um the federal government or CDC on having an um a vaccine program or consistent um back vaccine program because this virus in particular uh mutates and changes, and it's unpredictable in that way. So we are continuing to just uh monitor as cases go up and down. But um at the point, at this point, they're going to continue and um but people are not as severely sick um and nee- needing to take the entire um time off. And those changes were made from the Delta variant to this new policy. So um that, for that reason, we have that corn isolation and quarantine guideline. And yes, I do, we do receive complaints um that um there is confusion around return to work um notifications and the policy, but I believe that there is leeway for staff to kind of verbally report um their return to work. So in relation to the COVID leave policy, I think it's important that we realize that um at some point, I guess we're continuing to just begin to um figure out what the next um normal would be for our employees. And that might just be reverting back to our regular and normal annual and sick leave. Um and most organizations don't have, they usually have both annual leave and sick leave combined, but I think there is adequate leave um going forward. And with the amount of time and the individuals need to recover um are really shortened at this time period just because um of vaccination and masking that's still required. So that would um provide um my update, Chair, and um the Hess committee. So thank you so much.
Dr. Jim, committee members, any questions? Agent? Honorable Paul Gay?
Thank you, uh Chair. Chair Daniel So, members of Hess committee. President Fowler and Dr. Jim. Know that the the report references uh employees, tribal employees. But um there are other concerns, uh mainly to you, uh Dr. Jim. These businesses on the reservation. This uh uh text message I just received at eight twenty-nine this morning. This a text said, yeah, good morning, Paul. I was wondering if masks were still mandated for the businesses on the reservation. Anyway, I see Tonaliya store not enforcing it. And no sign of indicating that. Our community is currently a hotspot again. It would be nice that to be, uh it would be nice to be addressed to the uh to the businesses as well. I know a lot of our local elderly shop there are high risks. I stopped there twice this week and saw tourists who in without masks and still giving business. I know that uh I stopped at Tonaliya uh Chevron store. Yes, up one day. There was a big sign uh eight, nine feet away from the door, that the entrance, that says uh face mask is required to enter. It would be nice to see that. People, uh that's the first thing that people would see as they come in. Tell them that uh telling them that uh face mask is required. Apparently, there are other businesses that. And even with this uh text I got. I think some type of a a notice that this this mandated uh requirement for wear and face mask should be uh put in a, put where where it's really uh noticeable as you go inside the store or some type of the business. Then I go back to that Cheyenne store. And the sun is kind of like four, uh possibly three feet by four feet. You can't help but notice it. And I even was walking towards it and I noticed it. And I was, so I turned around and I got my mask. That that should be to the, one of the alert system uh way to alert people.
Thank you. Uh committee members, uh anybody else? Dr. Jim?
Yes, Ashana. Thank you, Sheaz, um Honorable Gay. I just sent an email to Mr. Capitan with DED and um Ms. Geraldine Thompson, which is with the Navajo Environmental Health and Protection Program, which oversees the food um their their permits and um to operate, I guess, in selling food. So I included yourself and Chair So on that email to remind businesses. Um so hopefully, we can have a response from them. But um that is my feedback, Chair, and Delegate Gay. Thank you for your um, I guess, informing me of those um compliance issues.
Okay, thank you. Committee members, anybody else? Uh colleagues? Hess committee members? There being none. Uh Dr. Fowler, uh Ms. Resita Tadi and Dr. Jill Jim. Um, you know, we've uh, we receive um email announcement. Um what I recall most uh is uh facilities maintenance, having to shut down because of closure at the office. And then there was another one with Office of Vital Record. Um and there are others. And so how are we handling um the deca- uh contamination? Is it coming out of program funds? Or is it coming out of the CARES Act and possibly the ARPA fund to decontaminate the workspaces? The other part that really uh is troubling, and I, as Chair, I'm inundated with texts from employees. Where an employee may have been exposed at work, at home, or at a business place. Through no fault of their own. They report, hey, I'm going to have to stay home. They may have taken the home test. But they know that they've been exposed, so they take the home test. And the supervisors are telling employees, you're going to have to take personal leave or sick leave. And the employee can't attest. And the employee can't attest to say it was at home. Can't say it was at work. But there's this availability of leave, COVID-related. COVID-related leave policy doesn't say you have to prove exposure. You have to justify. And it seems like, and we've been issued a home test kit. But then some of the supervisor are saying, your test results have to be coming from the health center or the hospital. So that needs clarification. And it's quite a mental strain on some of our employees. They may have already used up their ten days of COVID leave. And then here comes this second exposure where they have to stay home. One, it's their family, their children, their parents, their elderly relatives. They isolate, but they're being told, you got to take personal leave. Use your own sick leave. Yet, we have the availability of funds, of which this committee approved the COVID leave policy. And that's the reason those complaints requests is coming to the Chair of this committee. Rather than assuring a safe and healthy workplace, we're complicating the mental health of our employees by being difficult to allow the usage of, continued usage of COVID leave. What does it take for this committee to say there has to be allowances? Does this committee have to enact a directive? Does this committee have to say, bring back that policy, we want to amend it? Is that what we have to do to get the supervisors? Could be at the senior centers, it could be at the, any places. And so, that's the part that's personnel management, human resources is under our We have folks that work with clients in social services. And we have people that have administrative oversight over the workplace. How can we be amenable to the fact that there is a continuing community spread? When an employee walks through the doors of the workplace, they don't leave that COVID exposure outside. They bring it in, or a client may bring it in. And we're telling the workers, you got to use your own leave. For me, that shouldn't be happening. There has to be a tolerance. As we went through a pandemic and the community spread continues, rather than being intolerant, we have to express a way to allow. And just the fact that employee may be stressed out. They may not file what you're saying is required paperwork. They're busy trying to keep their fever down. Basically, trying to stay well, trying to stay, to recover. We have supervisors saying, where's that paperwork? So, that's the part that really, really, like, for me, it's, as division directors, how do we let that tolerance slow down to the supervisors? Yes, we'll work with you. When you get better, you can submit the paperwork, but we're going to assure you that you keep getting paid. And that's the part that I really feel like, as people in charge, have to be amenable to that. Remember, we're working with human change, our own Navajo people. And we have, in a certain aspect, when we say we're supposed to provide a safe workplace, we, in effect, serve as guardians for our employees when they come to work. Committee members, forgive me for being, expressing some hard, hard ideals, but it has to be said. Thank you. Committee members, Chair is open for a motion to accept the report. Delegate Begay motion to accept report. Motion by Honorable Paul Begay. Committee members, do I hear a second? Thank you, Honorable Kalona. Any other comment? Honorable Paul Begay Jr. Delegate Paul Begay votes green. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Haloda. Honorable Pernell Haloda. Honorable Pernell Haloda votes green. Honorable Carl Russell Slater. Honorable Charlene So.
Green.
Honorable Sergeant So votes green. Honorable Edison Deonika, green. Honorable Edison Deonika votes green. Chair, a vote of four in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, committee members. Let the record show a vote of four in favor, zero opposed, the Chair not voting. Ms. Angelica Benali, could you then take us to item five C?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item five C is with the, from the, a report from the Division of Community Development, an update on the Summer Youth Employment Program, benefits and limitations of summer youth employment for the Navajo youth. Presenters are Lydell Davis, Senior Accountant, Division of Community Development, and also Pearl Yelloman, Executive Director for the Division of Community Development. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. So, let's go to Dr. Yelloman. And I think, at the time, Ms. Sanlasta Jim Martin, as well as Lydell Davis.
Good morning, Shana. Could you hear me? Okay, good morning, honorable members of Hess committee. Yeah, today. Dona, thank you for giving us this opportunity to give a report, report on summer youth. I'm also joined with Ms. Sanlasta Jim Martin and members of the ASC Department. And then we also have our attorney from the chapter unit, Mr. Rod Begay, who will be listening in. So, good afternoon, and I'll go ahead and start. We, Division of Community Development, we normally submit and work with a sponsor early in the year or late in the, in the current funded year. So, we did work and reach out to the sponsors, delegates Eugene So and Delegate Wilson Stewart the end of January and February, going into March. So, we started to draft that. So, one, one of the concerns is why was it funded? Or why, why was the legislation process so long? But we, we did start early. And also, we, we did draft the, and work with the Legislative Office, Legislative Council early in the year. I do note that the legislation itself, it did go through the legislative committees. But once it got to NABI, there were several occasions where time ran out on some of the NABI sessions. And ultimately, the summer youth legislation was not discussed on more than one occasion. And then most recently, there was a request to move the legislation up, I believe, on a Navajo Nation, Navajo Nation Council session. And, and that's where it was then discussed and, and approved. So, we were thankful for an amendment to include a reimbursement language dating back to May first. So, we know that some chapters may benefit and use that. So, members of Hess committee, those are some timelines for this year's summer youth. There was a directive for DCD to immediately respond to the legislation once it was passed and signed into law. And our division and members of our accounting team have a good working relationship with OMB and OOC. And so, they were already working on some of those budget forms and working with the chapters. So, Ms. Jim Martin is online and she can go into a little bit more detail on that directive and how we normally respond to those types of directives. The other question or concerns that came up was, can summer youth, moving forward, be considered for ARPA or ARPA pay? There was a DOJ response that some of the duties had to be similar or COVID-related or COVID mitigation related, perhaps similar to what in the past with CHRs, or those were duty-related or COVID-related. So, those are some of the responses that DOJ provided. And so, that's what, that's where we're at currently right now. I think in the future, and we have been working with chapters to express some connections with summer youth. And what I mean by connection is that, what I mean by connections is that the chapter staff, where the, the chapters can make connections with summer youth and their HDNA funds. In the HDNA, there are eligible activities, such as developing walking paths or activities that the summer youth can engage with. So, those are some connections that we hope chapters can make and use to their community advantage. So, HDNA was one. The other is, we're hoping that the, the chapters would adopt a more flexible type of employment schedule. Traditionally, summer youth was, or summer youth are traditionally employed from May to August. But because we have so many students now in some type of hybrid or students who are taking online classes, we wanted to extend that flexibility to chapters, to explore employing students outside of that traditional role or traditional timeline from May to August. And then lastly, of course, it's really important that chapter officials and chapter staff practice the Navajo Nation personnel policies and give fair employment opportunities to youth. And making sure that, along with the personnel policies, that they are providing safe working environments and non-hostile working environments. That's really important to us and, and to the, and to the chapters. So, we, we really hope that the chapters are expressing and, and teaching the true meaning of, of Navajo Nation government and the true meaning of a healthy work environment. So, members of Hess and Chair Sewell, I'll wrap up there. And if I could also extend some time to Sanlasta Jim Martin. She does have a little bit more details on the budget and can answer additional questions and add to my report. Thank you, Shana.
Thank you, Dr. Yelloman. Sutie, Sanlasta Jim Martin, you have the floor. Committee members, before she gets on the call, the Chair will call a recess at 1:00 PM. An item came up that I can't defer, so I got to, rather than having lunch delivered, we can get. rather than having lunch delivered, we can get lunch. Thank you. Ms. Sondlastra Jim Martin.
Yeah, it's Ashananta. Thank you, um, Honorable Chair and Health Education and Human Service Committee members. This is Sondlastra Jim Martin. I am the ASC Department Manager. We do manage all 110 Navajo chapters, and I would like to just introduce myself formally. In Shleniggi, Aya Tanabilinshla, Ashandina Abashishchin, Ashandina Dashanala Do, Ashi Hentashiche. I work for the Division of Community Development with Dr. Pearl Yelloman, who manage the summer youth employment budgets for all 110 chapters. We work closely with the chapters through our administrative services centers, our ASC offices. We have eight offices that are within the Navajo Nation at all five agencies, as well as three sub-offices to assist all 110 of our Navajo chapters. I would like to just add to our verbal report that we do have, um, some questions that do come up regarding our summer youth employment program at the chapters, which are unique to each chapter. And as you know, all of our Navajo Nation chapters are different and unique, and they do serve their summer youth employees differently depending on the leadership at the chapter and what services they're able to coordinate with partners to provide the employment opportunities and work experience for youth. Also, we, uh, do get questions regarding how the funds are allocated for the summer youth employees or the summer youth employment budgets. Just to be clear, it is based on the number of registered voters in each chapter, and that is based on the registered parents of that chapter guardian or the youth if they're 18 and over. And that is how the numbers are allocated for each of the chapters based on the 50/50 formula. Um, we did have a question that came up regarding which youth are eligible, and that is one of the requirements. I did also want to share the eligibility criteria is established through a resolution that was adopted in May of 2001, under the Transportation and Community Development Committee back then, TCDC, which is now the Resources and Development Committee, the RDC Committee. Under the TCDC Committee back in May 2001, the updated policies and procedures were provided, excuse me, were provided for the chapter summer youth employment funds. In those TCDC summer youth employment policies and procedures, there are eligibility criteria that all the chapters must follow unless they amend their policies with DOJ review. Currently, the eligibility criteria for the youth participating in chapter summer youth employment programs include the following. They must be a member of the Navajo Nation with a census number. They must be between the ages of 14 to 25 years old. They must be enrolled in a high school, college, university vocational or technical institution. They must be unemployed at the time of applying for the summer youth employment program. And they must either be returning to high school, college, a university vocational or technical institution within six months of applying and are willing to provide the supporting documents. Additional eligibility criteria include a social security card for tax purposes, and also, um, they must not be expelled or on probationary status from high school, college, university vocational or technical, or a technical institution. The eligibility requirement also includes that they must be a legal resident of the chapter. So, those are policies that have been adopted in Resolution TCDC CMY dash 43 dash 01, adopted May 2001, and that's what we currently use with all of our chapters. And, um, the chapters do have opportunities to amend their policies as needed, but those do have to be reviewed by our DOJ chapter unit. We also know that there have been questions regarding summer youth employment, regarding the application process. All of our chapters do have a template summer youth employment application that they use. They do require a letter of interest, um, which should describe their career goals. And then they also provide the supporting documents when they apply, such as, um, their school, college, or university documents, as well as their, um, verification information, like their CIV. So, these, um, summer youth employment programs have been, um, historically provided to our, um, summer youth, um, students, not only during the summer for clarification. Um, when there are funds left, we do have chapters that utilize those additional funds for winter break. So, our, um, our summer youth employees who are out of school for winter vacation can also, um, gain employment experience during the winter break at their local chapter or work site. And then, um, during spring break, there's another opportunity for youth to also, um, be employed at the chapters if there are funds available. For the most part, our chapters do, um, get a lot of requests from our youth to participate in summer youth employment. It is a source of income for our young people from 14 years old to 25 years old. It does provide them with additional financial resources to prepare for school. And due to the COVID pandemic, there's been, um, an even more increase in that request. However, it's been challenging to get summer youth employed, um, in our communities due to COVID restrictions or COVID exposures. So, right now, we do, um, fully support our summer youth employment program at the chapter level, and we do, um, always need additional funds. With that, Shananta, that concludes my verbal report, and we stand for any questions. Yeah?
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms., uh, Jim Martin. Committee members. Question? I guess, uh, the reason that, uh, we have this item on the agenda, is the fact that some of the chapters don't really, there's so many don'ts to this funding. And some of the chapters are stymied on how to best use or give, uh, work experience to their, um, the youth that are employed at the chapter. And so, that's one of the reasons that we, um, put this on the agenda. But don'ts. And if necessary, we would, uh, sponsor legislation to amend those. Um, some of the presentations that I've been approached with is Youth Conservation Corps, AmeriCorps. And then there's a new program that was just announced by Secretary Deb Holland regarding Native American youth conservation, I think it was. Um, so, in those aspects, uh, the Youth Conservation Corps, they build, um, they actually pick up rocks and move them to build trail. That means they use a shovel, a hoe, and possibly sled chain to break up rocks. However, from my presentations at the chapter, I'm told, they're prevented from using tools. So, how do then, uh, we, um, amend our policies? The, the one thing that I was talking about is Secretary Deb Holland, um, announced, uh, two tribal leaders, that it's called Indian Youth Service Corps, and it has guidelines. And so, in, in that aspect, if you, uh, Google it and bring it up, uh, how do we amend our policies? And then from, on our nation's side, who would apply? Would it be, um, from within DODI? Or would it come from within community development to apply for this, uh, new source of federal fund? So, those are some, uh, the main basis for putting this particular item on the agenda. Ms. Jim Martin?
Yeah, Shananta. Uh, those are good questions, um, regarding, um, possible funding sources from the Youth Conservation Corps, AmeriCorps, and Indian Youth Service Corps. Uh, we do have some chapters that do coordinate with AmeriCorps with some of their, um, outside coordination. These are our certified LGA chapters that do coordinate, um, youth employment with their AmeriCorps programs. But those are only with some of our LGA chapters. Uh, right now, the Summer Youth Employment Program under the Division of Community Development and the TCDC Resolution is all through general funds from the Navajo Nation. We do not have external federal funds. So, that would definitely be a discussion we would need to have with, um, DOJ as well as the other divisions as far as where the appropriate, um, location of such programs could be for our Navajo youth. Thank you.
A follow-up question, uh, Mr. Martin. In funds that were distributed, do the chapters have to adopt, um, resolutions to accept the money? Or does it just automatically go into their budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the question. Yes, all Navajo Nation chapters must have a supporting resolution for all funds allocated to the chapter. This is not only required by the division, but also, um, OOC, OMB, and also for auditing purposes. It's very important to have that transparency at the chapter level and for the chapter membership to know what, um, funds are being accepted by the chapter and allocated for which, um, fund, um, funding items. So, summer youth employment is one of many of the chapter funds that we manage with the chapters, and it is a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members. Any follow-up, uh, Honorable Edison Winika?
Uh, thank you, Chair, and members of the committee. Um, that these students have to be legally registered. Um, you can't register if they're 16 or 17. And, um, I know, uh, they don't have to register. You see, uh, if they're a permanent resident of a chapter, they've been living in that chapter with their parents all those years, even the parents don't have to be, be registered to get assistance. But if they, uh, go to a new chapter, let's say they, uh, build a home in a different location, they were not permanent resident of their community, then they have to be registered. So, Akwaleh, oh, can you clarify what you mean by legally registered? Because 16 and 17-year-olds can't register in the first place. Thank you.
Ms. Jim Martin?
Thank you, yeah. Uh, I understand the question regarding what we mean by legal resident of a chapter. I think that's a very good question. It has been, um, asked of us several, um, times, um, from various leaders, what we mean by that. As it's written in the TCDC Resolution, um, it does not elaborate very much. However, I do have Mr. Rodrick Begay from our DOJ chapter unit, who has been helping us to address the legal residency of a chapter, um, definition. So, if we could, Mr. Chair, have Mr. Begay help us in answering this question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jim Martin. Mr. Robert Begay, the chapter expert, are you on the call?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Begay, um, is not able to join at the moment. He's trying to call in. Could we come back to that question?
Let's come to Chris, uh, Star Six. Um, yes, we can come back to him. Uh, basically, um, feel like the item for, um, within, um, item C, uh, with Department of the Net Education. And there is the part, not necessarily the, uh, career incentive, but, um, youth development, uh, I, (cough), the name escapes me. DYB? ODY? Oh, the Office of the Net Youth. Um, we may have listed them on the agenda as, uh, wrong, but we do have, uh, ODY also having, uh, students placed with, uh, different programs. They do have, um, the ability to also, uh, coordinate with outside agencies. Um, Ms. Carmen Muffet or Ms. Denise Thompson, could, honest, could you, um, lead us in the right direction? And for, uh, Ms. Muffet, uh, we will, And for Ms. Moffett, uh, we will correct uh, your, the name, uh, your, the spelling of your name on the agenda. It'll be M-O-F-F-E-T. I'm sorry for having uh, uh, misspelled the, um, your name.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, thank you, members of the committee, Mr. Chair, for the time in addressing this topic. We do have, from the Office of Dene Youth, our program manager Denise Thomas is unable to attend today, but we have a representative who is here with us. And let me check just to make sure that he's here. It's Alharino Sita. So let me look at the list. Alharino, you have the floor to represent the Office of Dene Youth. And the individual that I just called has the, uh, was recommended by Ms. Denise Thomas to give the report on behalf of the, um, of the department. So let's see if we have the representative from the Office of Dene Youth. Uh, I see that we have a hand up, and I'm not too sure if that is the representative, if that's Alharino. I don't see the name listed on the participant list.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Denise Thomas.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas, for joining us. Ma'am?
Uh, no problem. Okay, thank you again. Um, the head committee, um, Mr. Chair, Mr. So, thank you. I should have, um, say, I don't think. She, uh, should add, uh, though, been that a, yeah, could though, I don't know, and she may, yeah, they should be in the store, my, they should be in the bus, she's cheap. I don't, that's nothing, eh, yeah, that's a che, that's a che, that's a nan. Eh, you said, oh, eh, yeah, and they, they should be torn, huh, so, though, I don't, eh, just shake. Been that, eh, yeah, could though, she, uh, Office of Dene Youth, well, yeah, Niki, eh, eh, yeah, I just, she, nah, nah, she, she, no, I just, eh, department manager, what, oh, eh, yeah, she, nah, nah, she, um, fast, uh. He could though, been I, they, she, Diki, incentive, career incentives, well, yeah, Niki. They, um, back in the late eighties and nineteen nineties, yeah, da, it, that youth opportunity, well, yeah, what, oh, eh, base, oh, but she, she, that, uh, eh, I don't, but, yeah, but, but, nah, and she, oh, no, uh, with the collaboration of, with workforce development. Eh, but, oh, though, oh, what, oh, been, uh, I just, nah, uh, though, she, that, nah, I just, she, though, eh, um, visit, Office of Dene Youth, oh, what, oh, eh, yeah, okay, oh, eh, yeah, she, she, the, eh. Um, we still do a lot of career orientation, I don't, been that, eh, she, Niki, youth, um, summer youth employment. And nearly, yeah, quite, give a, oh, three, through, um, the chapter. Eh, um, they, who's, she, that, eh, yeah, what, uh, base, oh, but she, she, that, uh, that, eh, Office of Dene Youth under Department of Dene Education. Um, about nine years ago, um, eh, base, oh, gee, eh, um, I like, Joe, um, have these, uh, don't, eh, community development, Joe, I Joe, but that, uh, okay. Every, every year, eh, um, then, that, eh, legislation, uh, um, we drop it, but unfortunately, it never gets anywhere. But, on, eh, um, with, on, our own budget, with what, um, by the third quarter, base, oh, gee, I don't, chose, and Diki, eh, we transfer those and we put it into youth, um, employment. Summer employment, uh, what, uh, what, eh, she, Niki, though, college students, in that, eh, not, ah, nah, she, okay, I, eh, in, the, eh. Um, our offices, uh, and Crown Point Office is very, um, very well oriented with this, um, career opportunity. Eh, they do presentation, and our students will actually, um, work with a, um, a resume. They do a portfolio, and eh, been that, eh, no school. If they're gonna look for a job, that's how they're utilizing these materials. Although the career incentive, one of the things that we implement during the summer youth employment, with what little money we have, we, um, we would take some of the students out to the local colleges, which would be Dene College or Navajo Technical College. And eh, uh, they, eh, they're, um, exposed with, um, with secondary education and able to pursue of their career, of a lot of things that, um, today that we have in our society. Um, the other thing that we also do implement is that on a yearly base or within each quarter, the office specialists, um, they do implement these career portfolios with, um, with different entities and different organization within the Navajo Nation. And that's how we expose a lot of the career opportunities. But as far as the incentives go, um, we don't provide any type of funding or stiping like for students. However, on the other side, we do have a scholarship that we actually are giving those funding through abandoned mine lands. And those fundings are used for high school preparatory students. But otherwise, um, there's no other funding that we actually provide. And then, um, but just doing the after-school programs, we do, um, have incentives of bringing students to, um, taking them to career fairs and depending on what type of activity the offices are actually planning for throughout the entire month. So those are things that, um, I just wanted to touch, touch base on of how Office of Dene Youth currently is operating with, um, summer youth employment. Right now, um, overall, we, we do have, um, summer youth employment at each site, but it's very limited, very limited. Um, one of the things that we basically are looking at our students that have not and that did not work for the chapters and through the workforce. So we do a lot of collaboration with the workforce in trying to employ some of these students. The most we would, um, actually, a student, like right now, we have, um, less than fifty of them that are working. And, um, ten days is the most that we could actually allocate for these students. But otherwise, um, I hope that, um, Tina explains of where we're at with the career incentives, because, um, this is something that, um, I would like to go back and do a lot of, um, research and see what we can do as a program to look on the outside of the Navajo Nation and be able to obtain and see if we could apply for grants. That is one of the things that my colleague, um, our administrative service officer, we've been collaborating, um, with those things. So I'm really hoping that we do accomplish with something and in those terms of getting additional funding for our students, because it is very much needed to expose this to our youth and having them be able to have that opportunity to go into the workforce. As they are going to school, in high school, or in college, or if they come home from, um, college during the summer. And that's what basically we are really looking at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas. And, and listed on the agenda is, uh, Ms. Virginia Nelson. Ms. Nelson, are you on the call?
Yes. Yes, I am.
You have the teleconference floor to address the committee. Thank you.
Okay, um, I just want to say good afternoon, though. Yeah, eh, she, Virginia Nelson, she, though, she was not, I just, so, she, I, I, I just, she, I see, that's another, though, okay, that's a che. Although, uh, program manager, program supervisor, three, eh, she, now, with the Crown Point Office of Dene Youth. Um, basically, I am on the call today to address, um, to address, um, employment under the Little Water Chapter. Uh, there is a dispute going on with the chapter officials at Little Water, which leads to, um, our young people not able to work for some, uh, during the summer employment. Um, scholarships are not being, being, um, made available to our kids. Discretionary funds are, are not being made available. And I do have a son that was told that he could apply for scholarship beginning July first. So when we did a follow-up with Little Water Chapter, I was informed by the secretary that, that there will be no summer employment. And I was also informed that there's no scholarships available for, for our chi, our, our young people that are attending college and universities. And because of that, um, there's no meetings that are occurring at the chapter level. So I did address this to delegate, so, because I am very concerned about what is, is happening within the Little Water Chapter in Eastern Navajo Agency.
I'm gonna go on leave here for a second.
My question now is, you know, what, what other alternatives are available in this case? Is there any policies in place when there is court orders that are in place against chapter officials? I'd be, eh, not, uh, so, eh, been in a chapter meeting, uh, do, 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 but, uh, I'd, eh, that. And the concern, too, is that I am a chapter voter, a, a registered voter at Little Water. And I know that, that gives me that opportunity to exercise my right to speak out. Um, community members are hesitant to speak out because they get blacklisted. And when they ask for help, you know, many times, they will not address what is going on. But I am very concerned because our young people are not having the opportunity to work. And the chapter does get that money, to give it, give the monies to, to each of the chapters as it was indicated earlier. And I know that there was, it was there really a legis, it, was there a legislation that was approved for Little Water? And if it was, um, it's affecting any employment that could be of, made available to our young people. And so that's the reason why I did bring it up to delegate, uh, so, because I'm really concerned about this. And how is the chapter, how is community development addressing this matter right now? Because our kids are gonna be going back to school pretty soon, and still, there's nothing that's being approved because no meetings are occurring at Little Water Chapter. And that was what I wanted to, to bring up today, because I think it's really important that, um, that we communicate with, um, community development, or, um, how is this being addressed? How do we, how do we get beyond the court orders that are, that, that is in place right now? Because two officials have this court, court document against one another, and that's preventing any meetings from occurring. Akia.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay. I'm sorry, uh, uh, Ms. Sondalasta, Jim Martin. Um, now, we've kind of made it a complex issue. So our chapter expert, Mr. Roderick Begay. Hope you caught the last part of the discussion, but, uh, issue basically is, uh, there's a lot of don'ts in the, uh, policies to employ summer youth at the chapters. Do we have a program? And in those aspects, uh, students are allowed to use tools. What will it take to end the program so that the students just don't listen to presentations at the chapter house? They are actually, um, being a resource in the community? Mr. Roderick Begay?
Okay, low, too. Um, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, eh, Mr. Chair, all members of the committee and those that are on call. Yeah, Roderick Begay, and, yeah. What you're gonna, so, be, but, twenty, that's a che, Kiana, that's a che, that's a, that's another. Um, I've, I, I did catch, um, the hell in, and i- if we're talking about Little Water Chapter, I'd rather not discuss that in a public setting. Uh, but I am, uh, discussing it amongst my colleagues within DOJ. Uh, but just for, um, for your information, uh, in the past, where there has been, after turmoil, where there are internal conflicts and, um, court orders, uh, being issued, uh, that prevent the chapter from operating, we have typically in the past, uh, asked the court to modify their court orders, because a lot of court orders are templates. Um, and so, you know, uh, and per se, that, that standardizes no contact, uh, directly or indirectly. Uh, might be used and might be, uh, interpreted by the chapter to say, oh, we can't have a chapter meeting. That's not the case. And so that's what we're currently looking at, um, based on how we've addressed certain things in the past. So that, hopefully, that addresses that. Um, I, my understanding is there was also a residency question, but I don't have the background in the context of how that question was answered. Um, and, uh, Mr. Chair, if you could, uh, repeat the other question that was answered, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Begay. Um, I will reach out to Little Water Chapter to, um, with their chapter manager, because they are a certified chapter, and convene the chapter officers via teleconference to start a way forward. Um, Honorable Edison Winika, could you repeat, um, the question? Honorable Edison Winika, would you repeat, um, the question? Uh, to, for, uh, Mr. Rodrick Begay's benefit?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, uh, Rodrick. Uh, this is Delia Winika. Uh, we were told by Ms. Jim Martin that, um, in order for students to work, they have to be legally, uh, registered. My question was, uh, 16 and 17-year-olds can't, uh, register. So, uh, usually in the election code, it says that, uh, if they are permanent resident of a chapter, then live in there all their lives, uh, for service, uh, for the purpose of getting a service, they don't have to be registered. But if they're going to vote, then they have to be registered. I was saying, if it's in the, uh, policy, legally registered, it's going to cancel all the students that are, uh, 16 and 17-year-olds. But, uh, Rodrick, and I, I know, uh, if it's, if that's how the policy is given to the chapters, they're going to have problems, uh, 16 and 17-year-olds. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Lit, Honorable Winika. Uh, Mr. Begay?
Hi. Yeah. Um, Delegate Winika, good to hear you. Uh, auto, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, handling some version of summer youth lately. Uh, in 2001, there was a template, uh, summer youth employment policy passed by the former Transportation and Community Development Committee. Um, that template, uh, said at the very beginning that it's only a template. If chapters want to create their own summer youth employment policies, they can. So, there's a lot of chapters out there right now that have their own summer youth employment policy. Um, so, let's, let's, um, keep that in mind. Uh, but if, if I look, when I look at the old 2001 TCDC policy, uh, it doesn't require, uh, registration, but it does call, it does require the, uh, the, the summer youth employee to be a legal resident of the chapter. Now, some, uh, chapters have deleted that requirement. Um, but even if chapters were to say that, you know, legal resident, residence, it was still a requirement, there are ways to deal with, with that, uh, requirement. Because usually you have a permanent residency and a temporary residency. So, you know, going off to school, uh, if you're in Arizona and your school is in New Mexico, obviously, um, we can make the certification. Um, but, um, going back to your question, Delegate Winika, some chapters have, um, not required the employee to be a registered voter, but they, they've required the parents to be registered voters. Uh, some chapters have required a- if the- nothing to prevent us from saying, "No, you can't, you can't do that." Um, so, some chapters do have a, a registration requirement for their parents. Uh, but none of the chapters should have a registration requirement, uh, for the, for the employee, you know, that are younger than the age, you know, their eligibility for, for their age to vote. So, hopefully that's not happening out there. But if it is, uh, you know, we can, uh, provide the necessary legal advice to the appropriate chapter. So, um, hopefully that responds, Mr. Chair and Winika. I'll go back, Winika.
Honorable Edison Winika, do you have follow-up?
I'll call.
Okay.
(cough) Thank you, Mr. Begay. Um, I guess the other, the other aspect is, you know, um, there is an ability for a person that's, uh, over 18 to select which chapter they wish to register with, even though they may be living in one chapter area. There's a ability within the Election Administration, Election, um, Code to where they do transfer registration from one chapter to another. And so, that kind of, uh, is, uh, is a difference, um, that it, that can occur. The other is, um, could, uh, Ms. Sondalasta Jim Martin, share that, uh, 2011 TCDC resolution, uh, with the committee? And that would really help it. Thank you. With that, uh, committee members, I think, uh, Chair's open for a motion to accept the report.
Motion.
Motion by Honorable Edison Winika. Right here a second.
Do we have a call?
Hello, from online.
Chair accepted a motion to accept the report. Um, Chair is open for a second. Do the motion.
Second by Delegate Paul Begay.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Paul Begay. Um, we will, um, be looking to see who will apply to, uh, get, um, the new funds made available from the Department of Attorney. With that, uh, Mr. Moes, real call vote please.
Sure. Honorable Paul Begay Jr. is later.
Delegate Paul Begay votes green.
Honorable Paul Begay Jr. votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona. Honorable Pernell Valona. Honorable Charlene So. Honorable Charlene So.
I vote green.
Honorable Charlene So votes green. Thank you. Honorable S.J. Winika, three. Honorable S.J. Winika votes green. Honorable Pernell Valona. Honorable Pernell Valona. Chair, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, committee members, uh, appreciate the attention to this. And thank you, Ms. Jim Martin, uh, Mr. Begay, and Ms., uh, Ms. Thomas. Going forward, I think we, we have a better idea of how to proceed. Um, let the record show, a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting. Committee members, as I have previewed, previously stated, uh, uh, the committee would go on recess at 1:00 and would reconvene at 2:00. It'll be the same Zoom number and teleconference number when we, uh, reconvene. Thank you. So, with that, uh, the committee is on recess.